A nice crowd joining us and so some of my comments will be obviously tailored to those who are here, but I'd also like to make a special welcome to those who are joining us on 97.9 WXCF live for tonight's forum. Just for a little housekeeping before we get going, my name is Eric Zeller and I will serve as tonight's moderator. And tonight's event is sponsored by the Effingham County Chamber of Commerce. I appreciate their support and always put together a nice forum so the public can understand the positions of our candidates and get to know them better, as well as the Effingham Elks. Thank you to the Elks for having us out tonight. So thank you to our sponsors. Our questions tonight came to us from our media partners here in Effingham. All of the media contributed to the questions and I want to make sure everyone knows who those are. Norma from the Chamber of Commerce, she's the President and CEO of the Chamber, was on the question committee. Jeff Long, the editor of the Effingham Daily News. Herb Meeker is a reporter with the Effingham Totopolis News Report. Greg Sapp is the station manager with Premier Broadcasting. And Dustin Osteen is the news director for Cromwell Radio Group. So they came up with the questions for tonight's forum. A little bit about the, how we're going to conduct the forum. There are two sessions this evening. We're going to start with the mayor's session. So we will have 10 questions, provided our time allows. And each candidate will have one minute to respond to the question. And by order of draw, we have chosen closing statement as well as who will answer the first question. So at the conclusion of our 10 questions, there will be an opportunity for a two-minute closing statement. And by order of draw, that will go in the order of Jeff Blumker going first, Scott Ely going second, and Mike Schutzbach rounding out our closing statements. And so our first questions will roll in reverse order of that. I'd like to take a minute and share the bios that were submitted by our mayoral candidates, give you a chance to get to know them better. And in alphabetical order, we'll start with Jeff Blumker. Jeff is a third-generation Effingham resident, a graduate of Effingham High School and Eastern Illinois University. Jeff has 30 years of senior management experience, having served at executive levels for Agrocell Incorporated, Mid-America Motorworks, Heartland Human Services, and the Illinois Department of Corrections. He is also actively engaged in community service, having served on the City Planning Commission, City Zoning Board of Appeals, EIU's Business School Advisory Board, County Board of Health, Effingham County Chamber Board of Directors, the Noon Rotary Club, and the Unit 40 Education Foundation. Jeff is married to Nancy and they have three children, Katie, Sarah, and Jack. And he is the son of JT and Cheryl Blumker. And Jeff has served as Effingham Mayor for the past four years. That is mayoral candidate Jeff Blumker. Our next candidate is Scott Ely. Scott is a private attorney with offices in downtown Effingham. He has served the area as a licensed attorney since 1993, served two years as an Assistant State's Attorney under Brian Kibler, and is a former adjunct professor of state and local government at Lakeland College. Among his many community involvement activities, Scott served as Chairman of the Effingham County Mental Health Board for many years, and serves annually as the Master of Ceremonies for the Effingham County Humane Society's annual fundraiser. He and his wife served together in many volunteer activities, including serving as wish grantors for the Make-A-Wish Foundation, the Relay for Life, and the Effingham County Vision 2020 Alliance for a Healthier Effingham County, as well as St. Anthony Church. Scott's wife Susan is a dietitian at HSHS St. Anthony's Memorial Hospital, and they have five children. That is mayoral candidate Scott Ely. Rounding out our mayoral candidates is Mike Schutzbach. Mike is retired, Mike is retired as Chief of Police for the City of Effingham, having served the Effingham Police Department for over 30 years. He is a graduate of St. Anthony High School and graduate from Lakeland College and Western Illinois University with degrees in law enforcement administration. He is a graduate of the University of Illinois Police Training Institute, Northwestern University's Executive Management and Public Safety School, as well as the FBI National Academy. He has also taught law enforcement courses at Lakeland College. Mike is a member of St. Anthony Church and the Effingham Elks Lodge. He is also a member of several professional organizations, including Illinois and International Associations of Chiefs of Police, Effingham County 911 Board, Effingham County Youth Commission, and the Midstates Organized Crime Information Center, the Illinois State Review, among many others. Mike has been married to Crystal for over 30 years, and they have two adult sons, Andrew and Justin. He is the son of Jerry and Marcy Schutzbach. And that is mayoral candidate Mike Schutzbach. So our, go ahead and get into questions here. And our first question, if I can, I know they're up here. Our first question will be directed just to my right here. Candidate Mike Schutzbach, please tell us about yourself and why you chose to run for public office.
With over 30 years of service to the Effingham Police Department, including 13 as Chief of Police, I'm proud of my public service record, and I have dedicated my professional life to serving the people of Effingham. I would like to continue to serve as mayor. As Chief of Police, I manage the police department, which included creating a balanced budget, overseeing daily duties of the department, and working with other departments and organizations to ensure our department was performing efficiently and effectively. The position of mayor requires a strong community leader, and I know I have what it takes to be that leader. I am prepared to take on the tough challenges and to work with other entities to make Effingham a great place to live, work, and play.
Thank you, Mike. Scott?
I'm Scott Ely. I'm very pleased to have the opportunity to be running for mayor. I have grown up pretty much in the city of Effingham, on Mulberry Street as a kid, on Jefferson Street, went to Effingham High School. I remember our mayors, Mayor Martin, Mayor Tease, and several others. And they were always very benevolent people who seemed to care what you thought, and they were willing to talk with you, speak with you, whomever you were, no matter what you were doing, even if you were some goofy kid hanging around at IGA. I think right now there's a disconnect between city government and the regular folks of Effingham. This disconnect wasn't there with the previous mayors. I'm someone people see on the streets, people can easily speak to me in the same way that they've spoken to past mayors. I have ideas that I felt weren't being heard, and I want an opportunity for everyone to be heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. And Jeff?
As a third-generation Effingham resident, I live and breathe Effingham. I love Effingham. I tried to move away right after college and I had to come back. My dad always says, "Once you drink from a little wabash, you can't ever leave Effingham." And quite frankly, I think there may be something to that. But in my adult life, I've been heavily involved with civic activities, and that has just fortified that love for Effingham. The two that really spurred my interest to get into city government was spending time on the Plan Commission and the Zoning Board of Appeals, where we conducted hearings relative to land use. And people would come in and share their dreams and vision with how they wanted to make Effingham great. So being involved with those, those types of, getting that taste of government activity, as well as recalling that the previous mayors from Effingham usually came from the business community. And so I wanted to represent the business community at City Hall and would like four more years to do the same.
Thank you, Jeff. Our second question will be led off by Scott Ely. And that question is, please outline what you feel are the two most pressing issues facing the city.
I think, and this is a difficult one, one of our areas of disconnect is what I would refer to as salary bloat in the city of Effingham. It affects our taxpayers. Salary affects pension. Pension affects property taxes. The second highest segment or item on your property tax bills is city pension. One out of every five employees of the city of Effingham, and as I look out and I see many employees, and they're wonderful people, but one, more than one out of five city employees right now is raking in compensation of more than $100,000 a year. That's too much. Things have to change. And I'm going to be part of that process, hopefully, and I would be the person who would have the difficult job of saying no to some of these requests. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Jeff?
Just to tag on to that, I believe there may be some misinformation. I don't believe one in five city employees make over $100,000 a year. And I think any mayor or anyone that gets involved in the city council is going to find out that their compensation is tied very closely to our state statute. So you have very little to do about it. Two things that I, we need to correct, clearly our housing, we need employment housing in Effingham. We're going to address that quickly here with residential TIF in the blighted areas where we can encourage developers and home builders to come in and build new houses, new apartment complexes, new duplexes in the older areas. Then we'll also find some greenfields where we can try to develop some new subdivisions. And those subdivisions may be dedicated to the likes of modular homes, because those fit the affordable housing description that came out of our recent town hall meeting.
Thank you, Jeff. And Mike?
Throughout my campaign for mayor, I've highlighted several priorities that I plan to focus on as mayor. With the number one priority is to keeping property taxes in check. I have extensive experience managing a conservative budget, and I will preserve the priorities of residents while maintaining the city's financial stability. I also hope to create an open dialogue between the residents of the city of Effingham and City Hall.
Thank you, Mike. Our third question will be led off by Jeff Blumker. And that question is, as mayor, what do you view as your role in leading the city government team and directing strategic initiatives for future growth and success? Jeff?
The mayor of the city of Effingham is the chief advocate. You're the chief sales representative. It's your job to represent the, represent City Hall and the people of Effingham 24/7 at all times. You're also the CEO of what's going to be an $80 million corporation. So you better understand how to lead people, how to do everything from moderate meetings to build budgets. And so my background in business lends itself quite well. I've found the past four years has been very helpful in terms of, because I've been leading people for the past 25-plus years in a variety of business circumstances, and it's played over quite well at City Hall. And again, I'd like four more years to carry on with the organizational structure we have.
Thank you, Jeff. Mike?
The role of mayor, I believe, you must have the ability to work respectfully with others, to listen to concerns of everyone and to help solve problems. I understand also the importance of financial stability. So being a leader, I will make sure that the city stays financially stable and taxpayers don't have to bear the burden of extensive taxes. I also believe that a mayor needs to be easy to get along with, and they need to be confident in stressful situations.
Thank you, Mike. Scott?
Thank you. First of all, going back to a previous question that pertains to this question, you have to be honest. You have to put it all out there, the information that you have. The city of Effingham does that, and that's where I got the information about compensation rates in the city of Effingham. And I did the math for myself. With last year's budget, the compensation rates were this. More than one out of every five city employees takes in total annual compensation of more than $100,000. Go to the website, check it for yourself, it's last year's budget. A difference between prior mayors and our current administration is that folks like Clyde Martin and Jack Tease ran their own businesses. They spent their own money. I know what that's like. I know what it's like to manage your own budget, and it's not easy. So while Mr. Blumker may have experience managing other folks' money, he doesn't have the experience that I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Our fourth question will be led off by, we're back around and we'll lead off with Mike. And this question's a little easier. During the previous 12 months, how many city council meetings have you attended in person or watched online?
I have watched every city council meeting online for the last year, probably longer.
And Scott?
I have watched most of them, although I have occasionally experienced trouble with the city's website. Additionally, I've been in person to two of the meetings recently. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Scott. And Jeff?
Past four years, I think I've missed two city council meetings. I had a pretty good, I had a perfect record going for the first two years, and then I became ill at one, another one I ended up having to travel. So I missed two city council meetings in the past four years.
Okay. Thank you, Jeff. And question number five will be directed to Scott. And do you support providing financial incentives for new and existing businesses seeking to grow and locate in Effingham? Please explain your answer.
Yes, I absolutely do support providing incentives to new businesses, but that is a sticky wicket. We have to be careful. We have to support the people who are supporting Effingham right now, and we can't step on their toes by giving special favors to folks who don't want to come here unless they get an amazing situation that's not available to our people who are here now. By the way, that also applies to city hiring. I am not in favor of hiring folks who don't commit to being residents of the city of Effingham, or paying them exorbitant salaries. We have persons who are, again, in this high compensation area that have not committed to the city of Effingham, nor committed to even the county of Effingham. We have to favor our own folks. We have to support the folks who support us and who commit to our area without being given special things.
Thank you, Scott. And Jeff?
Incentivizing businesses to locate in Effingham or develop internally, organically here in Effingham is kind of, is a special balance. I think at one time we spent maybe too much effort on trying to attract businesses globally. And you still have to do that because, and you have to have all the tools that we have here in Effingham, an enterprise zone, business districts, TIF districts, things like that. And you have to get out there and do some hard selling to get them to consider moving to Illinois. But the other thing, I just attended a rural economic development conference in Springfield, and an interesting aspect of that was to take some of that effort and resources that you put in global recruiting and put it into your local economy. And I think that's a very cogent point, and I'm looking at bringing this person, who is the author of the book and was the speaker, to Effingham. I've been working with the Chamber of Commerce to look at doing that here maybe this summer, because I think that's a very important thing to do. Invest in your local businesses, it's heavier than you might normally, and that organic growth will pay dividends for you.
Thank you, Jeff. And Mike?
I too believe that we need to invest in our local businesses. We need to recruit from outside the area, looking at larger employers. If businesses succeed in Effingham, everyone succeeds. The employee succeeds, the city succeeds, and the taxpayer succeeds because others assist in the bearing of the burden of our taxes. So I am very supportive of the business districts, the enterprise zones, economic development, in any way that we can move it forward in the city.
Thank you, Mike. And that concludes our question number five, and we're midway through our questions for the mayoral candidates. And I want to make sure that everybody who's listening online, you're catching this live. But also, you're going to have an opportunity to catch several, either tape delay or video delay in the future. So just so everybody's aware, Premier Broadcasting, getting it live right now, and it will also be available via tape delay. Pay attention to 97.9 WXCF for when that will be available. As well, Cromwell Radio Group will have this available in video, as well as, I believe, Facebook, is what Dustin shared with me. So they will have that available on effinghamradio.com, so you can tune in there as well. And finally, the Chamber is going to have this available on their YouTube channel, and you can find out the Chamber website at effinghamcountychamber.com. So several opportunities to go back and listen to the responses from our candidates. They've taken a significant amount of time and preparation and energy, and it's not easy to be up here getting questions from, that you have not seen before you got here tonight. So I appreciate and applaud the effort of our mayoral candidates. So thank you for being here. Question number six, leading this question off will be Jeff Blumker. What are your thoughts on the issue of affordable housing in the city? And do you feel work needs to be done to address this issue as a way to attract people to fill jobs in our community? Jeff?
I've spent the past four years visiting our local employers with our economic development team, and that's a recurring theme. Affordable housing, employment housing is a more apt term. Affordable housing gets into a whole different realm, and that's where it gets a little tricky. There are a lot of taxpayers that don't want to see the city get involved with subsidized housing, and so that's a little tricky. So employment housing, again, as I alluded to earlier, the solutions there are to create a residential TIF district in our blighted areas and go through gentrification in those areas, encouraging and incentivizing developers and home builders to build new residences in those areas, but then also look for greenfield opportunities. And that might require annexing more space into the city of Effingham, expanding our boundaries, but that focus may be on modular homes, because that falls into that price range of, say, $150,000 for a single-family home.
Okay. Thank you, Jeff. And Mike?
Jeff has it mostly right. However, he's had three and a half years to get there. I believe there's limited area for desired land development for affordable middle-class housing. Our city should work with organizations and developers to create additional land usage options for development. Housing has been a concern in the city, and although there's been several properties constructed in the city over the last few years, I know more can be done, working cooperatively with banks, realtors, developers, construction companies, government bodies, and others in creating incentives to develop land for building affordable houses. By building new homes, we can welcome new residents in our community, which will result in a larger workforce and a creation of additional tax dollars.
Thank you, Mike. Scott?
You know, you can't complain about people not wanting to take low-income jobs if you don't have affordable housing for those folks as well. Our recent Affordable Housing Forum was a hastily convened setting 33 days before the election. It was not well thought out. Affordable housing is also a legislative issue for the folks that we send to Springfield. They were in session, none of them were present for this meeting. One gem speaks volumes about the City Hall session. They were talking about affordable housing, affordable employment housing, in the ballpark of $150,000 to $200,000. That puts a lot of our seniors in trouble and our lower-to-middle income folks. That's just totally unreachable for them. This was not an Affordable Housing Forum. We need to have one. We also need to watch the legislation that is before the Illinois House Subcommittee on Property Taxes tomorrow. The legislature can give us some help on property taxes. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. And question number seven will be led off by Mike Schutzbach. And at any time, if a question needs to be repeated, please feel free to let me know. Question number seven is, how would building relationships and staying connected with surrounding local units of government benefit the city?
It's a must. The city must get along with the county. There are two government bodies that must work together for the taxpayer. Currently, there are some difficulties running at large with the two bodies, so as it is, as it sits today, I believe there's minimal cooperation. That's something that needs to change for the betterment of our entire community.
Thank you, Mike. And Scott?
I agree wholeheartedly with Mike. The city and county don't get along. Too many things happen behind the scenes that affect what is reported on, that you, you know, you only see the result, but you don't see why these things have happened. There is a lot of backbiting, there is a lot of... There are problems between the city and the county. When I worked in county government for the state's attorney's office, we didn't have that situation. But we do now. Everybody who works in city government and county government knows it, and it's a real shame. It hurts our people.
Thank you, Scott. And Jeff?
When I started my administration as mayor four years ago, I was very committed to creating a very good relationship with the county of Effingham, because it had been tenuous. Let's face it, the relationships in previous administrations had been tenuous. And I was very committed to paving that, because I have friends on the county board, still do. And we made some progress. Or give you some examples of how we did it. We were, the county was, everyone knows the county was having trouble with an ambulance service. The people of Effingham said, "We need better service." We were going to create our own city service. The county came to us and said, "Hey, don't do that. That could harm our negotiations with the current ambulance situations." We backed off. Another situation was, the sheriff's department came to us recently and said, "Hey, we can't afford to have an officer in the schools, a school resource officer. Can you help us out?" We stepped up and took that over. As chief advocate for the city of Effingham, sometimes you have to make hard decisions that sometimes are counterintuitive with your other governing office.
Thank you, Jeff. And question number eight will be led off by Scott Ely. And that question is, have you ever owned or managed a business where you met payroll, used a spreadsheet, or wrote a business plan? Scott?
Yes. I have managed my own business for 25 years, and meeting payroll and providing benefits is not easy. It's not easy when it's your own money, and someone who doesn't have that experience can't relate to it. When we're working in county government or city government, you're dealing with other people's money. So sometimes the folks who are in office don't give a proper respect to the fact that you're dealing with taxpayers' dollars. You're dealing with taxpayers' assets. You work for the people. It is their money, and you can't treat that lightly. Some of the perks that we have now, we didn't have before, and I'm not going to take some of those perks. We don't need a mayor's car. I'll walk. I'll ride my bike before I take a mayor's car. We don't need things like that. That's taking advantage, I think, of the taxpayers. I won't do it.
Thank you, Scott. And Jeff?
Once again, I need to correct Mr. Ely on his facts, the mayor doesn't have a car. But let's get to the main point. Can you repeat the question again real quick?
The question is, have you ever owned or managed a business where you met payroll?
Every business I've worked for for the past 25 years, I've been thrown into budgeting processes, anywhere from $15 million businesses up to $250 million businesses. And I don't think you can, nothing against the small business owner, more power to them, but it's very difficult to compare with doing a budget for a one- or two-person office and one that's $80 million, like the city of Effingham with 150 employees. It gets very complicated. And you need to understand, you want to talk about how to make concessions, that's where you find that out. And this is where the true business skill and the business experience comes into play, when you sit down with the city staff and try to make those difficult decisions in terms of how you can operate the city effectively under tight budget restrictions.
Thank you, Jeff. And Mike?
Well, I've got two things in regard to the current mayor's statement, because over the last couple of days, I've had people sending me pictures via the text messages showing the mayor has a city car sitting in the front of his house. Also, the current mayor doesn't necessarily do payroll. I've worked for the city for 30 years, worked the police department for 13, and we actually did the payroll, myself and my secretary. So I've done that. Prior to the police department, I managed a local hotel, which was long before computers, where we handwrote paychecks to our employees, and we actually used a calculator to figure out the taxes. So to the answer of your question is yes, I'm very familiar with how payroll and bookkeeping work, done it for my entire adult life.
Thank you, Mike. And our ninth question... And our ninth question will be led off by Jeff. How do you plan to keep in touch with residents to know what is needed from City Hall? Jeff?
Four years ago, when I started my administration, we started a mayor's blog, and that didn't get much response. The best we can do at this point is make ourselves available 24/7. I carry the mayor's cellphone 24/7. I respond to phone calls typically within four hours, respond to text messages almost immediately, respond to emails typically within 12 hours. So, with the technology and our mobile society right now, you're constantly on the move, and we try to make those numbers available to people. When people call into City Hall, the city staff makes me aware of anything that might, of who they are and what's going on, and so we try to be as responsive as we possibly can. We have speakers cards every city council meeting. Residents can come in and access the city council in that manner as well.
Thank you, Jeff. Mike?
I plan to be a mayor that's going to be at City Hall to take the phone call when the phone call comes in. I also have thrown out to different groups that I've spoken with about the possibility of having a separate line, sort of speak, to allow citizens to call in and voice their concerns, no matter what it may be, on a line which would be answered, recorded, at any time of the day, similar to Schimkus's office, which many of us have used. If you have a problem, you can call his office, get his recording, and you can say, as I do many times, "I don't expect a call back, but here's my problem."
Thank you, Mike. And Scott?
I agree with Mike. I've written this on my Facebook site, that I would establish regular office hours for the office of mayor. People need to know their mayor's going to be present when they want to see their mayor, and they should have some kind of expectation of the mayor being present at City Hall. The folks at City Hall work for the city. They shouldn't have to be communicating with the mayor who is not present to let him know what's happening in his absence. I would establish regular office hours, and this is something that I've done and discussed with people, and that's another way I'm more accessible. I talk with people about these city government issues on my Facebook site. There's not, there are very few questions I have not addressed, because I'm not afraid to talk one-on-one with the citizens anytime they want to do that. I've been doing nothing but that since last December. I've taken the questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. And our final question for the mayoral candidates will be led off by Mike. And that question is, in your view, what has the city done well over the last four years, and what has the city done poorly that you would change? Mike?
The city has hired exceptional workforce dedicated to their positions and willing to do, go the extra mile, no matter what is called upon them. What has the city not done so well? I believe there's a disconnect with the current mayor's office and those citizens who have minor problems, so to speak. The business community is well taken care of by the administration, and sometimes the little old lady or little old man that needs something addressed gets overlooked.
Thank you, Mike. And Scott?
I agree, we have some very wonderful city employees. I want to give a shout-out in particular to Todd Hall, Economic Development Director for the city. We've had some great things happen out of that office and out of his leadership, so I appreciate very much what he has done. One thing we've done very poorly is we have no standards on our social media for the city. The city of Effingham Facebook site is comical. It has become a selfie site, and it doesn't provide information that the taxpayers should have. I had a post on that today, and I compared our site to the site by the Springfield mayor, who provides information and who stays out of the picture and is just dedicated to his city and the citizens of his city. First and foremost, the citizens come first. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. And Jeff?
Going back to two quick items, anyone who tells you that, anyone who hasn't spent time in the mayor's office with the city of Effingham, as busy as we are, and tells you they're going to spend time in City Hall is probably writing checks they can't cash. Relative to social media, the person in charge of building content for the type of social media that Mr. Ely's alluded to is his stepdaughter, Sasha Althoff, and so we have someone that's dedicated to that activity. What we've done well in Effingham, as Chief Schutzbach mentioned, we have a great staff. We have a very skilled staff. They're dedicated people. They're worth every penny we pay them. They do a fantastic job for us. We've done a great job with organizational development. We've done a great job of fueling our downtown area. We've rewritten various codes that help support that type of development. We now have events going on that have proliferated. We have more fundraisers than we ever have, I think, in Effingham, and it has to do with the focus we've, and the rehabilitation of downtown. We spent $685,000 in my administration to help rehabilitate our downtown, and I think we all have seen the dividends that's paid.
Thank you, Jeff. And that concludes our questions from our media panel. At this time, I will open it up to our closing statements, and once again, they will have, the candidates will have two minutes for a closing statement, and by order of draw, the first closing statement will be given by Jeff Blumker.
First of all, thank you to the hardest-working chamber in downstate Illinois for giving us this opportunity tonight. Folks, it has been an absolute honor and privilege to have served the people of Effingham as your mayor for the past four years. We are very proud of what we have accomplished together. Effingham has become the shining diamond in downstate Illinois. In fact, Site Selection Magazine just came out with a list of the 50 most dynamic metropolitan areas in the U.S., and Effingham is number 29 on that list. That didn't happen by accident. The past four years haven't been easy, but I have enjoyed it. We have moved the needle. We have set the bar higher, and that was our intention from the get-go. We knew we weren't going to ride the fence. Give me four more years, and we'll keep this momentum going. If I win this election, I'll walk into City Hall on April 3 and just keep the ball rolling. No downtime. Now, I need you to listen closely to this. We have made great progress in transforming the Effingham Police Department from version 1.0 to version 2.0. It has been two years of very hard work. Courageous decisions have been made. Accountability and compliance and community engagement have never been stronger at the Effingham Police Department. We need to take great care not to do anything that would undermine that fantastic progress. Effingham has too much to lose if our law enforcement can't keep up with our growth, and that is something you can believe in. Vote on April 2, and when you do, reelect Mayor Jeff Blumker, because it's working. Your support will be very much appreciated. Thank you.
That was mayoral candidate Jeff Blumker giving his closing statement. And next to our closing statements will be Scott Ely. Scott?
First, the news that the city is touting about its new rating from this entity called Site Selection Magazine, that actually is old news. It came out February 20. It was a Walton Family Foundation study, basically having to do with cities in which Walmarts were located. It had to do with cities also between populations of 10 and 50,000, so I've been watching the news. You know that remark about the city's website, "Don't think for a minute that the mayor is not in charge," and the mayor asks, and I don't know if it's a request or demand, but he has people take his picture. It's not about this mayor, folks. It is about our people, and that is what this race has to be about. I gave myself one primary note. It's all about our people, and I think you will find that if you elect me, for example, I would be very appreciative, and I would promote our people. And if businesses want to think about coming here, I'm going to tell them about our people. That Walk of Fame idea that you might read about in the back, it's not pie in the sky. It's a very cheap idea, but that idea is all about our people. We have to know our history. We have to salute our history, and we have to tell people about, not the mayor, it doesn't matter who the mayor is, we have to tell people about the people of the city of Effingham and all the great accomplishments. How in the world do we get things like five major league ballplayers, essentially, from the city of Effingham? It's a special community. How do we get somebody who writes songs for Madonna and Whitney Houston? How do we get people who rebuild a hospital after the tragic 1949 fire? It's all about our people. Thank you.
That was mayoral candidate Scott Ely giving his two-minute closing statement. And for our final two-minute closing statement, Mike Schutzbach.
I'm Mike Schutzbach, and I'm running for mayor of the city of Effingham. A great city is measured by the quality of the lives of the people who live in it. Now is the time for leadership, grown out of taking on the city's toughest challenges and winning. That is what I have done as a police officer, an investigator, shift commander, deputy chief of police, and chief of police in this community for over 30 years. That's what I'll do as mayor. I grew up in this community. It's where I've learned that you get more accomplished when you work with people than when you fight with them. But it's where I also learned that you have to be prepared to take on the tough fights, and that making a real difference in people's lives is what matters most. I am motivated by the wish to serve the Effingham community and protect our quality of life. I have the skill, experience, longtime community involvement, and personal commitment to lead the city. I will work hard to preserve residents' priorities and the city's financial stability. I have always been financially conservative and will stand with the citizens of Effingham to stop the city from raising our property taxes. I will work with local businesses and assist them accomplishing their goals, utilizing public resources when it makes sense. I will work with local organizations to bring to the Effingham area more affordable housing. Most importantly, I will be the voice at the table for those who have elected me. My experience also includes managing a local hotel, employment as a court service officer, probation officer, and law enforcement instructor at Lakeland College. I have the experience where it counts, right here in my hometown. I'm proud of my public service work, but I'm not done yet. As mayor, I will offer new ideas for an ever-changing city. This is why I offer my candidacy for mayor of Effingham. I believe I have the lifetime experience that counts. Experience, I will put to work for you. I ask for your vote April 2. Let's work together and make Effingham a great place to live, work, and play.
That was candidate Mike Schutzbach giving his two-minute closing statement. And that concludes our mayoral candidate. I want to thank Jeff, Scott, and Mike. I appreciate your willingness to serve and willingness to put yourself out there and work towards making Effingham a better place. I appreciate all your comments tonight, and appreciate you taking the time to share with the community a little bit about who our next mayor might be. So, we will take a brief pause to get ready for our city council candidate. So, thank you very much, gentlemen. And our table has grown quite a bit, from our three mayoral candidates to our eight city council candidates. So, we're not going to go any faster. We have 10 questions, but we're going to give everybody ample opportunity to provide their responses. But I do have eight bios that I would like to read for everyone, so we get to know our candidates. Starting down in alphabetical order, to the crowd's left here, is Don Althoff. Don is an Effingham native and graduate of St. Anthony High School and the Culinary Institute of America. He worked at the Ramada Inn in Effingham, World Color Press, and Forbes Magazine before becoming a business owner. Don co-owned Propcorn Treats and Other Eats for 11 years, and owned and operated Quiznos in Effingham for 10 years. Don has been a volunteer firefighter for 34 years, member of the Effingham County Board for nine years, and is completing his eighth year on the Effingham City Council. He is actively involved in the creation of the Construction Trades Education Curriculum, also known as CTEC, and promoting plans to revive the Hart Theater. Don's wife Carol is retired from Midland State's Bank, and they have a daughter, Jamie, and son Clint, and have four grandchildren. That is city council candidate Don Althoff. To Don's left is Kevin Escher. Kevin is a graduate of St. Anthony High School, where he served as class president. He has a bachelor's degree in finance from Eastern Illinois University. Kevin has worked for Quad Graphics Petty Company for 33 years. He has been a member of the Knights of Columbus for 40 years. He is married to Kelly, and they have one daughter, Allison. Kevin is completing his first term as a member of the Effingham City Council. That is candidate Kevin Escher. Seated next to Kevin is Mervan Gilenwater. Merv retired from the Illinois State Police after nearly 25 years, having served as criminal investigator, investigations commander, patrol commander, and commander of the Southeastern Illinois Drug Task Force. He has also served in the U.S. Army and worked for the Coles County Sheriff's Department for seven years while attending college. Merv received his MBA from Eastern Illinois University with work towards a degree in sociology. He is a member of Centenary United Methodist Church, American Legion Post 120, and Loyal Order of the Moose. He works with the Lake Sarah Dam Run annually to support Special Olympics and is a member of the Effingham County Public Health Committee. Merv and his wife Pat have one son, Matthew, and two grandsons. Merv is completing his eighth year as a member of the Effingham City Council and also served four years as Effingham mayor. That is candidate Mervan Gilenwater. Seated next to Merv is Larry Meisenheimer. Larry is a retired high school guidance counselor at Effingham High School and former bus driver. He has also worked for the Effingham Park District and Kerner Distributors. He received his education degree from Eastern Illinois Diversity and a master's from the University of Illinois. Larry is actively engaged in the community, volunteering at the Effingham Park District, Effingham Performance Center, TREC, and St. Anthony Schools. Larry is married to Lisa and has sons Andy and Tyler and a daughter, Haley. That is city council candidate Larry Meisenheimer. Seated to Larry's left is Jane Miller. Jane is a lifelong resident of Effingham County and a graduate of the Patricia Stevens Career College. She worked for the city of Effingham for about 20 years as a technical assistant in the Engineering and Public Works Department, assisting with the capital improvement budget and annual city audits. She served on the Labor and Management Insured Benefits Committee and was a chairman of the Wellness Committee. Jane's prior work experience included working for the city attorney and for a local state representative. She is a member of Centenary United Methodist Church and serves on the Church Council and Communion Committee. She is also a Meals on Wheels volunteer. Jane and her husband John have been married 45 years and have two children and two granddaughters. That is candidate Jane Miller. Seated to Jane's left is Libby Muller. Libby is an Effingham native, graduated from St. Anthony High School, and received a political science degree from Eastern Illinois University. She works for the Juvenile Diversion Program, a part of the Effingham County Probation Department, and is also the marketing coordinator for Austin Mansion and Walnut Street Weddings. Libby served as executive director of CASA, Effingham County Court-appointed Special Advocates. She currently serves on the City Plan Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals. A board member of the fourth, she is a board member of the Fourth Judicial Juvenile Justice Council, and she has served in many volunteer capacities in the community through Rotary, the Unit 40 Education Foundation, HSHS, St. Anthony's Community Advisory Board, and Donor Relations Committee. Libby and her husband Scott have owned their business for over 10 years. They are members of Centenary United Methodist Church, and Libby is on the Church Council Chair, where she is the Church Council Chair. They have two children, Tucker and Maggie. That is city council candidate Libby Muller. And seated to Libby's left is Henry Hank Stevens. Hank works with Thedrick Bank and Business Development and has served on the bank's board for over 30 years. He is a prior member of the Effingham City Council and served as city attorney for 19 years. Hank has been involved in many of the city's major initiatives, including development of three TIF districts, the City-County Enterprise Zone, four railroad-grade separation projects, and recruiting and retaining a number of businesses and industries to the community. He is a past trustee of the Lakeland College Board, a founding director of the Effingham County Community Foundation, and has served a number of years on the Chamber's Legislative Committee. Hank and his wife Debbie have three children, and that is council candidate Hank Stevens. To Hank's left is Kevin Willis. Kevin is a retired... Kevin is a retired city police officer and business owner. He serves as security director for J&amp;J Ventures Gaming in Effingham, and he has served on the ambulance oversight committee and on the board of directors, is on the board of directors at Effingham Country Club. Kevin is completing his first term as a member of the Effingham City Council. He and his wife Deana have three children and three grandchildren. That is city council candidate Kevin Willis. So, as I said, our format will be the same. We will have, we're going to try to make this easy and start down here with Kevin. We'll have ten questions, one minute to respond, and we'll just move ourselves down the road. So, our first question tonight, please tell us about yourself and why you chose to run for public office. Kevin?
You probably just heard it from you. Myself, again, Kevin Willis, I'm currently serving on the council. I've been a servant of Effingham for over twenty-five years, and I just wish to continue serving in the capacity of the commissioner for the next four years.
Thank you, Kevin. Hank?
Hank Stevens, and my reason for doing this probably isn't all that different from the reason I had, I hate to say, forty years ago when I first ran for the city council. The city's in my blood, running for the council at that time was one of the best things I think I ever did. Began a career of, depending upon when you say it, ended up thirty-plus years working for the city. I've been away from it, but still follow what's going on, and with the encouragement of some folks, I decided to give it another shot this time around.
Thank you, Hank.
Forty years ago.
Did I say forty?
You said forty. I'm forty years old. So, this is, so this, this is a great segue. So, I really want to broaden the representation on the city council, and I've always been civic-minded, and I thought it's time that I put my name on the ballot and see if the city wants me to represent them. I've never been one to shy away from voicing a care concern in the community. As many people know, Chief Schutzbach and Merv Gillenwater and others, when they were on the council and when they served, they were very open to answering my questions and my concerns, and I want to be open for other people in the community.
That was Libby Muller. And Jane?
This question was asked of me numerous times, and especially after working with the city and for the city for thirty-five years, they all thought I was crazy, and why would I want to continue to be involved? But it's sort of like a child and watching them leave. Only you would be leaving them, and I've been involved, I've seen good things and I've seen bad things, and I just want to be a part of the decision-making process now, and I would look forward to that.
Thank you, Jane. Larry?
Actually, my journey to seek another term as a commissioner started right outside the building here. It was a hot sunny evening, and I drive a school bus, and I had forty sweaty kids on there, and we got stopped by a train on Banker Street. And I reflected on, when I came to Effingham forty years ago, you couldn't get anywhere without being stopped by a train, and I know what the city council meant in getting that done, and I kind of reflected on my term and previous term as commissioner, and I decided, you know, it was a lot of good things that happened. It's a good investment of your time, and it's something that really makes a difference in the community.
Thank you, Larry. Merv?
Some people have asked me why I want to run again, too, quite often, as a matter of fact. When I first retired from the Illinois State Police, I thought that was what I really wanted to do. After a year, I realized I couldn't. I had actually served the public so long that I didn't know what else to do. So, we had one person that was going to retire from the council, and I decided that I would try to run for that position. Bad thing is, we replaced the entire council, everybody, one that was running except for one, and I think Alan Harris is still here, and glad you got to stay on the council, Alan. But then, I promised everyone that I was going to only run for one. Then I ran for mayor, one that loved it, but I had a few people telling me that they liked me, so I decided I better get out while it's good, but I couldn't completely get out, so I ran for city council again. Well, I now cannot quit. I've got to go one more term, and I promise you, this is it. Thank you for giving me.
Thank you, Merv. Kevin?
I'm running for city council just for the same reason that I ran before. I love Effingham. I feel like you need to have good private business to run a city like a business, and working in the printing industry for as long as I have, it's a tough, tough industry, and we're still going.
Thank you, Kevin. And Don?
Hi, my name is Don Althoff, and I just enjoy serving the people, and I enjoy working with the people. Somebody asked me a question. I try to beat on the employees up at City Hall all the time. I think they get tired of me being there, but I think that's our job, to find out why and answer the question for the people as soon as you can, and I think I do a very good job of that. And I just, I really enjoy it. I was the thirty-four years of the firefighting, and was on, being on the county board and stuff, I really enjoyed it, so I hope I get back from it.
Thank you, Don. And our second question will be led off by Hank Stevens, and that question is, please outline what you feel are the two most pressing issues facing the city. Hank?
One of the things I think that served us so well over the many years that I was involved was the fact that we, as a city, reached out to other organizations, be they other public bodies, school district, county, Lakeland College, Park District, and worked collaboratively with them, and we did the same thing with the private sector. And I'm concerned, and there was some discussion about this earlier, as you heard, that that is no longer the case, and I would like to do what I can to restore that great working relationship with the other taxing bodies. We used to meet with the county board chairman and vice chairman once a month with no agenda, just so that we knew what each other was doing. The other thing I'm concerned about is, and I'll talk later probably, but if you live in a city, you pay thirty percent more property taxes than someone living just outside the city, and I'm not sure that we're getting thirty percent more value for that, and I'd like to take a good look at that.
Thank you, Hank. Libby?
I would have to agree with Hank. That concerns me on that thirty percent, because so many people my age are living outside city proper, and it's very upsetting to me, because I've chosen to stay in the city and live here and reap the benefits, and I think there's a lot of benefits to be had for that. The other problem, I think, is, I think we can always improve that relationship between the city and the county. And both have been very receptive when I communicate with them and when they answer their phones. It's wonderful communication, but I would love to get everybody on the same page and see what we can do going forward.
Thank you, Libby. And Jane?
I agree that we do need, the city and the county do need to work more closely together. It's not, a lot of county people complain because we want to raise a one percent sales tax or something, but you, they use our streets, we use our streets, everyone uses our streets, you know, so we all need to pay. But I think there needs to be better communication with the county and the city, as well as the council with the city staff. The city staff puts in a lot of work, having been a part of that. I remember what it takes to come up with information, to find the funding, to work with the budget, I remember all of that, and we need that communication with city staff, with the city, with the county, and also the integrity of the city needs to be improved. A lot of people have the wrong idea about the city, and we need to improve that.
Thank you, Jane. Larry?
I really think the two issues that I'd like to see addressed is affordable housing, it's a crucial need in our community, and I think we need to offer some of the same incentives to housing people that we do to business to come, in the form of streets, sewers, water, and tax breaks in order to kind of boost the help within the city limits. If we don't have housing, there's no place for our new employees, and it kind of stifles growth. The second concern is economic development. That truly is a lifeline to our community. We've been on a roll here for a long time. We've had three great projects out by the interstate recently came to our town. J&amp;J Gaming is growing, there's lots of good news economically in the community, but if we don't address the housing issue, it's going to kind of stifle that growth.
Thank you, Larry. Merv?
One of the primary needs that we have, and this is something that we are addressing, we've done so for the last eight years, very, much to an emphasis, and that's our infrastructure. People continue to talk about, we need to bill more, we need to do this and that. It's great to have new things, but our infrastructure needs to be addressed. As far as the communication between the county and the city, that does need to be improved. However, we actually have different needs and desires. Even though we're working together and have similar things that we work on together, we don't have the same needs, and we have to kind of find that common ground and figure out how to get along.
Thank you, Merv. We're answering the question, please outline what you feel are the two most pressing issues facing the city. And next will be Kevin. Kevin Esker?
Housing, again, I'm sure it's on everybody's mind, because the department that I work in, there's fifteen people, two people live in the city. Most of them live all south of town, and it's got to do with the price of housing. A hundred and fifty to two-hundred thousand dollar house is going to cost you anywhere between twelve hundred dollars a month. I don't think there's a lot of employees out there that could afford twelve hundred dollars a month to live in a hundred and fifty thousand dollar house, once you put the payment, the insurance, the property tax, and everything else, I know you're going to have over twelve hundred dollars. Another thing, and I'm not going to go to the county, because I guess we beat that horse enough, but the other one would be the parking in downtown. We want downtown to grow, but at the same time, we're running out of places for people to park, and I don't know if it's to get more city parking lots, if we could buy more property at a really reasonable price, that's, could be a good opportunity.
Thank you, Kevin. And Don?
I'm about in the same boat as Kevin did about housing and stuff. I think we really need to look at that, and I think we do look at that real hard, but I think another thing needs to be corrected is Fayette Avenue. I think it's a disgrace, it's been thirty years now, I think it's been about trying to get Fayette done, and I think we need to go to the state and put a lot of pressure on them and get that done. Also, the Southern interchange, I've been pushing hard for that, and people, how that will affect the whole southern region of the town, plus Dedrick, Bishop, Watson, all the whole area down there, it'd help the whole southern, get the trucks out of the middle of downtown, and it would just really help, but I know we got a big uphill battle on that, but I think that'd really help the city of that in Fayette.
Thank you, Don. And we'll move down here to Kevin.
Two things, right?
Two things. It's been a while. We're answering the question, please outline what you feel are the two most pressing issues facing the city.
You know, I think it's the same issues that you can say is a day-to-day, and that's economical growth, being, trying to get new business in, or maintaining, or attaining, or keeping the ones we have already here. I think that's a continuous day-to-day issue or problem that we face. I think another one is, to be honest, I think Effingham's a great place to live, so I'm trying, I'm nickpicking here kind of thing, you know? I think one of the biggest problems that we need to look at, and I think it's the little sign outside Effingham that says thirteen thousand some odd people, and we all know that this community is bigger than that, and I think that keeps a lot of maybe industry away and even other businesses away. So, annexing property, I think, is something that we need to look at a little bit further. I know we have. It's just, it's government, it's a slow-moving wheel, you know, slow-moving wheel, but it does keep moving.
Thank you. That was Kevin Willis finishing up our second question, and moving on to our third question that will be led off by Libby Muller. In your view, what is the role of city government? Libby?
My role, my view of city government for, as commissioner on the city council, is being the go-between, between the experts that we hire that work for the city, because we have amazing talent in all our departments. And I never, I'm always amazed at their abilities of what they can do, from the police department to the fire department, to the water department, to every department, and so I think my role would be bridging what they do and what they're expert at to what the taxpayers and the citizens want, and what they want to be done with their tax dollars.
Thank you, Libby. Jane?
Let me repeat that one.
The question is, in your view, what is the role of city government?
I think the city council must be fiscally responsible, number one, for the tax dollars of our citizens. We have to make the best use of those tax dollars. We have to prioritize our projects. We can't change the budget on a whim, you know, because something else has come up or some citizen is wanting something else. We have to make the best use of our tax dollars and, at the same time, improving our, the looks of our community, our, our economic development. We have to do everything with that money, the most that we can, so that's it.
Thank you, Jane. And Larry?
I think the role of commissioners and the mayor is that you're really hired by the citizens. They're the people that put you in office, so you're the link with the community. You're the person that they see out and about, and they can communicate with you, and I think we've been blessed in this city with visionary leaders and a can-do attitude. If you look back to seventy years ago, when our hospital burned down, the next morning, the leaders of the city were getting together to figure out how to rebuild the hospital, and they also addressed the shortage of water that went to fight the fire that night, so Lake Sarah came about as a result of that. And I also reflected earlier on the railroad, so a lot of, when I came to town forty years ago, you couldn't get anywhere around town without multiple train stoppings and, you know, process of the can-do attitude, and probably about thirty million dollars, we built over and underpasses, and you can fairly easily get around the town in spite of our trains.
Thank you, Larry. Merv?
I think it's our purpose to manage the city in such a way that our citizens feel safe, they have a place to work, they have places to eat, they have good roads to walk, drive on, sidewalks to walk on, and that they are secure in their homes.
Thank you, Merv. Kevin, we're answering the question, in your view, what is the role of city government?
The role of city government to me is being able to speak what you think the people are telling you, and relay that on to the policies and what the city is getting, trying to get done, or what they, how to help them out. I see yourself as a representative of the citizens, so you need to listen to them.
Thank you, Kevin. And Don?
I think representing the citizens of the city of Effingham is very important, and I ask a lot of questions. I question a lot of stuff at city council meetings. I vote against a lot of stuff, because I don't feel it's right on some of the stuff that's brought up and what the completion is, because a lot of times, the council's not even involved in make, coming to that, how it gets there, and then all of a sudden, we're supposed to make a million-dollar question answered. And I just, I just feel that I've done a good job at that, and I think I represent the people real well.
Thank you, Don. And we'll come down here to the other end of the table, and Kevin Willis will answer, in your view, what is the role of city government?
I agree with most of what they said. You know, we're representing the citizens of Effingham and trying to be responsible with their money, but I also believe that we are the, we give direction to the city administration, the city departments, in direction of which way we feel that they should go, things that they should be looking at, things that they should be doing.
Thank you, Kevin. And Hank?
I think simply stated, the role of any city government is to provide essential services, fire protection, police protection, streets, sewer, water, and certain basic amenities. But what, every city has that role, but what sets cities apart that can do it versus those that struggle are if the city has a strong economy, a strong economic base, and that's why, in all my years, I thought economic development really trumped everything else, because if you have a strong economy, strong sales tax revenues, strong property tax revenue, all those other problems that you're dealing with as a city are a lot easier to address than a city that's struggling. So, the role is to take care of those basic needs. The way to get there is to make sure you have a strong economic base in the community.
Thank you, Hank. And our fourth question for the evening will be led off by Jane Miller, and that question is, during the previous twelve months, how many city council meetings have you attended in person or watched online? Jane?
Well, I retired last May from the city, and since that time, I have probably only missed two, either watching online or being there. Prior to that... Prior to that, I'm not sure I really needed to be, because I actually worked there, I knew what was on the agenda, I knew what happened afterwards. But since then, I've become very interested, and I want to, I've tried to attend as many council meetings as I can. And if not, I've watched them online. If I don't get to watch them that evening, I go ahead and watch them the next day or, you know, within the next week.
Thank you, Jane. Larry?
This is kind of an embarrassing question for me, because I haven't been to a single city council meeting in the last year. I have stayed informed, I am a diligent reader of Greg's WXCF news site as well as the papers. And once you've been on the city council, it's kind of in your blood, and you really follow that stuff, even if it's from a distance. And quite frankly, that's what I did, watch it from a distance. I was still really interested in what was going on, but as far as attending a meeting, I really had no desire to do that.
Thank you, Larry. Merv?
I think that if I've missed two meetings in one year, that's unusual. I think the most I would have missed is being maybe one meeting. And to be physically there, maybe not. But I've talked to everyone I need to talk to prior to that meeting, and all of our staff is, they're very good about keeping us informed, both before and after the council. So I am aware of what's going on when I miss those meetings.
Thank you, Merv. Kevin?
In the last 12 months, I've hit all 24. I haven't been sicker on a vacation or anything like that. But I do want to note, when I do attend the meetings, I print out the agenda, I look at the attachments, and I do go through all the information well before every meeting.
Thank you, Kevin. Don?
I think I have missed one city council meeting in the last 12 months. Also, I, the meeting comes out on Thursday, and I sit down right away and look at it and do all the attachments and make sure I understand it, and I go up to City Hall and ask questions about it if I don't understand it. And I was very involved in the police department when we built that, about making it financially fiscal and stuff, so, thank you.
Thank you, Don. Kevin?
I think I've been to every one of them. I may have missed one. I've been to every one of them.
Okay. Hank?
So I'm going to answer what I want to answer. For 23 years, I hardly missed any. But I've probably been to one or two in the last year when there's certain things going on, but kind of as Larry alluded to, if I listen to Greg the next morning, it's as good as being there, so.
Thank you, Hank. Libby?
As far as city council, I watch all of them online, and then I am on zoning board of appeals, and I'm on city plan commission. I think I've only missed one of each of those, if I can think correctly, but the last, my last term. And I've definitely spread the message for the system that we have to watch that live and how they're archived. A lot of people don't know that in the city, and that's something I've been trying to spread the message on, and they're very pleased to hear it and see it.
Thank you, Libby. And I think this is a great time to recognize our current and those running, 24 meetings a year, and having to prepare for those meetings and make sure you're aware of the issues. It's a lot of information to go through, so thank you to all of you for your commitment to that. Our fifth question is going to be led off by Larry. And that question is, do you support providing financial incentives for new and existing businesses seeking to grow and locate in Effingham? And please explain your answer.
First of all, the staff at City Hall does an incredible job with recruiting business and incentives. From the outside looking in, it looks like it's a handout, but if you don't play the game, you're not going to get the people to come to your town and be interested. And economic development is crucial to our city, and Todd and Sasha and Steve and all the folks at City Hall, they work real hard at getting packages together to get people to come to our town. And I remember when I served on the council, that was job number one at City Hall was economic development, and we worked very, very diligently at that task.
Thank you, Larry. Merv?
When we talk about incentives, it sounds like we're just giving people money. And to a certain extent, we are, but we always get something in return. We always make sure that we're not just giving that money and letting them walk away. We make sure that sometimes we have what we call clawbacks. If you do not agree and do not fulfill what we've asked you to do by providing so many jobs, you know, you can't just come in here and build a building and walk away from it. You have to provide those jobs. If you don't, you're going to give some money back to us. So yes, I am for it when we have to.
Thank you, Merv. Kevin?
Yes, I definitely support new business and existing businesses. But I do think the staff does a really good job of, and they've done a better job as of late, not just the development, but also the police and the fire and going after grants that probably were not available before. And when you see that the city is giving so much business money, it's not always the city's money, and a lot of times, it's a grant that they've worked hard to get.
Thank you, Kevin. Don?
We worked very hard to get Backseat Company to come into town, and that's been a very blessing for us. And Kerners Distributing was actually real on the verge of moving out of town, and we kept them in town by incentives and stuff. Also, Continental Mills is, they were talking about going down into Kentucky and building an addition onto that plant, but they decided to stay in Effingham. So incentives are very, very important to Effingham. It's probably 75 to 100 employees, and those three employers themselves this and last year, and it's very, very important.
Thank you, Don. Kevin, we're answering the question, do you support providing financial incentives for new and existing businesses to grow and locate in Effingham?
Yeah, I think it's a must, and unfortunately, Donnie took pretty much everything I was going to say right before I got the microphone, but he is correct in saying that, you know, Kerners, I think that the city staff and the council was very diligent in working out a deal with Kerners to keep them here. Obviously, they have, you know, Effingham's been blessed because we have multiple businesses in Effingham that even though they may be here, they're also in bigger cities, Champaign, they're in Marion, they're in Metro East. So they obviously have an opportunity to leave Effingham, and I think that we've been pretty fortunate. Again, the city staff is phenomenal with coming up with incentives that make sense, that we can return our investment on, or that we have an out if they don't do what they're, they say they're going to do. So it's absolutely a must.
Thank you, Kevin. Hank?
We used to talk about how nice it would be if no one, no other cities in the state or the country could give incentives, because we figured we'd stand up really well against most of them with the attributes that we have. But unfortunately, it's a competitive world in which we live, so incentives are just a fact of life. I think the key to doing that is to make sure, number one, that there is a need for the incentive, that you're just not handing out cash to anybody who comes to door. Some communities, I mean, some businesses are going to come here regardless, some of them, you need to provide those incentives in order to attract them here. It's not an easy task to figure out in which category they fall, but it's essential that you do that. But essentially, it's just imperative that you have certain tools, whether it be Enterprise Own, TIF, or other types of things. Without it, you don't get a seat at the table with companies.
Thank you, Hank. Libby?
Yes, I feel incentives are incredibly important, and first and foremost, you have got to be loyal to the businesses that are here, because we have amazing businesses that have been here for decades, some 50 years, some a century. So the incentive deal with Kerners is perfect when it comes to loyalty to businesses that have been around forever. And I think our city does a great job vetting and attracting new business, and you have to help them. I mean, if the proper incentive is a good tool, like Hank said, it equals jobs, and you have to help those new businesses get on their feet. I mean, with the rapid change in commerce and technology, it could take a solid five years for a business to get properly planted, and we want them to stay planted here and bloom in Effingham.
Thank you, Libby. Jane?
A previous city employee once, he moved to the Chicago area, working in the engineering department, and he said, up there, businesses wanted to come in, that the area where he lived, they did not have to offer incentives. We have to do that here in order to compete with the larger cities. I think that it needs to be based on job, jobs created, and on what it offers to the community. It cannot, just like Larry and everyone said, it can't, the money just can't be given. And we have to have the money, we have to weigh the pros and the cons, and how this is going to affect our economy here. And they have to be good jobs. They can't be those low-paying jobs. They need to be good-paying jobs that's going to help everyone with housing and everything else, so.
Thank you, Jane. And that concludes question number five. And our sixth question will be led off by Merv. And that question is, what are your thoughts on the issue of affordable housing in the city? And do you feel work needs to be done to address this issue as a way to attract people to fill jobs in our community? Merv?
Excuse me, I knew I would get this question. It's really not as easy as most people think. We do need housing. However, we recently held a town hall meeting in which we had some of our developers attend, and they were actually surprised at how well we were trying to address this. I just happen to have our, one of our engineer reports here. We have total units available, or going to be here very soon, of 362. We have several lots that are in the process right now of having apartment buildings on, built on, some, we have duplexes that are going to be built on. The problem is, we, and the city can't talk about these until we finalize the agreements. But yes, I'm not sure we need to incentivize at this point, but we might at some point in the future.
Thank you, Merv. Kevin?
Definitely, there's a problem with affordable housing. Like I said earlier, two people out of 15 in my department actually live in the city. But what is affordable housing? What is middle income? That's a question that I asked at the meeting for, at this forum that we had about this affordable housing. And I do think that mobile homes might be a good idea, it's not really, or modular homes, they're not really even, they don't even really look that much like they used to. There's a big change in that type of housing. But I also think you can't go out and do something like what Dietrich has, because if you're selling those lots off at that low of a price, you're going to have developers competing against one another and saying, why didn't you ever do this for me before when there was a problem? So it's a slippery slope.
Thank you, Kevin. Don?
Well, I stated at the meeting the other day about, we had 300 lots coming available, what Merv spoke about, and I said, how do you compete against guys that are out there, or ladies that are out there trying to develop this property? And we're going to be given a lot for 10,000 or 15,000, they're asking 35,000 for a lot, and they got to put roads in, we can put roads in, a lot more reasonable. But we're using taxpayers' money, is that right, when we're competing against the private sector? And I don't think that's right. But I do, Heather Mumma brought up about homes and stuff, more affordable homes and stuff. Maybe, we have a bunch of open lots in town where maybe we could work with the public and do stuff with that, but I don't think we should go into the subdivision business.
Thank you, Don. We'll come down here to this end of the table for Kevin.
Obviously, I think we have an issue, not an issue or a problem, or a lack of, I don't, medium housing. And I think from the town hall meeting that we had, that we're talking about property between 175 and 225. That's where I'm going to talk about. And I actually talked to a realtor today, and she said that right now, on market, there's only two of them in that range, in the city of Effingham. I'm talking about the city. In total, there's only 24 houses in the city of Effingham for sale right now. You know, so housing, obviously, I don't know what the market's doing, I don't understand why there's only 24 housing, you know, property in Effingham. There may be something where, you know, the entry-level house, or the first-time homeowner that wants to move to that next level is not doing it for some reason right now, but there, you know, is there something we could do as far as, you know, assisting real estate or residential development? I think there is, I just don't know what that answer is, and maybe we can just have that dialogue and continue to move and find something out.
Thank you, Kevin. Hank?
There is no short answer to this. I've been concerned about housing moving away from the city for a long time. We have not been able to attract a lot of development within our city limits, since that we're losing not only revenue, but we're losing talented people who are moving outside of the city or not available to us. I think there's a few reasons for that. I've talked about the property tax differential between the city and outside the city, I think that needs to be addressed. I'm concerned, talking to some developers, that we've become a development unfriendly community, that is, the process of getting development has become very difficult here, and I think that needs to be addressed as well. I think we need to be willing to work outside, or think outside the box. I was fortunate enough to be involved in the early days with Dietrich, and what they have done over there is remarkable. It's not necessarily that we do that, but what they did, they had the right people together, the school, the village, and the private sector, and saying, how do we figure out a way to address this problem? And it has worked extremely well. It may not be the same program, but if we're creative, we can come up with something that should work.
Thank you, Hank. Libby?
I agree, we definitely have a housing issue going on, and I agree a lot with what Kevin Willis said. So my husband and I bought our first house almost 20 years ago, and we bought our business about 12 years ago, and he had his go-to, we had two trucks quit out on us this summer, so that really put us in a bind. But his truck completely gave out. Well, we had to purchase a new truck, because you have to carry on with business. Well, that truck cost almost what our first house cost. So I totally understand what that looks like for a middle-class family that's working their tails off, and what that could look like for Effingham, and how we can address those concerns going forward.
Thank you, Libby. Jane?
I may be just a little different than everyone else up here. So I was putting out signs, I saw a lot of houses for sale, a lot of houses for rent, apartments for rent, and maybe they weren't exactly what people are looking for, but I feel like if anything, we need to improve what we have. And I don't believe that our tax dollars should go to develop something that someone else is going to profit off of. I don't think that developers should profit from, the buildings that we're hoping to move forward for the city, or for the residents, I don't feel like the developers should make a profit off of that. I just, I feel like our tax dollars should go for something better. We need to, the, I'm sorry, I'm having a little trouble here. The county, the outside of the county, or outside of the city pay less in taxes. That is the reason that people don't want to live in town. I've heard a lot of people moving out of town for that reason. So we can't really use only city tax dollars to incentivize the building of houses inside the city.
Thank you, Jane. And Larry?
Well, I think it's consensus to everyone, it definitely is a problem with affordable housing. I think a creative, public-private cooperative, thinking outside the box is the answer. I think that Dietrich, and to some extent, the T-Town blueprint for what they've done has been very successful to their communities, and maybe we could give tax abatements to new construction, which over a few years, just like we do with the industry when they come to town, that would help the homeowner with the sticker shock of the lot, and then over time, they get an incentive to build within the community, and then we'd also reap the tax benefits once the tax abatement goes away.
Thank you, Larry. That concludes question number six. And question number seven will be led off by Kevin Esker. And the question is, do you consider Effingham to be a business-friendly community? Please explain.
I do consider Effingham to be a business-friendly community. I mean, the business that just came in, it's opening up Monday, Hobby Lobby, that's going to be a huge tourist draw, not just to, because the next closest one, I don't even know where, maybe Champaign. But you know, the people that are going to come here to shop at that store are also going to come here to eat, and there's plenty of restaurants all in that area. Effingham is also friendly, like we were just talking about, to Kerners, and trying to help out and to get more businesses.
Thank you, Kevin. Don?
Yeah, I think Effingham's very blessed with all the businesses we have, and they all work together. Norma does a good job with the Chamber of Commerce promoting it, and working with all the different businesses. But well, with Meyer coming in too, that'd be a big shot in the arm to the north side of town. And just, I think the city and the businesses work real well together.
Thank you, Don. Kevin? Kevin?
I heard we weren't. And I think that the issue that some of the people I was talking to was building codes and fire safety codes and stuff like that, which I think that over the last four years we addressed. I mean, we actually redid the whole building code two years ago, thanks to the staff really working hard at. And when I'm talking about that is that, you know, the building, businesses, that it was forever to get their permits and stuff like that. And I think that we have streamlined that. In fact, a few of businesses that came into Effingham outside, like McAllister's and Panera Bread, and some other ones, they absolutely said, this is the fastest we've ever got permitted to come into, you know, a town. And I think maybe some of the locals, you know, you know, don't understand exactly how fast we are as far as getting it from A to B. So, thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Hank?
I think historically, we've been very business-friendly. I have been concerned about some of the things. I'm glad to hear what Kevin is saying about some changes that maybe have taken place more recently. But as I indicated earlier, I have heard developers complain about the process and about getting roadblocks thrown their way. I think we went a little overboard on some regulatory things for several years, and hopefully that is or has been addressed. So again, generally speaking, I think we've been business-friendly, but I don't think we are, I don't think we have the reputation today that we historically have of being a great business-friendly community to locate in.
Thank you, Hank. Libby?
I think we're very business-friendly, and I would like to continue to do whatever we can to be more business-friendly. You know, the town's what, 13-some thousand, and then the county is even greater. And then if you're out on Keller Drive at any time on a Friday or Saturday, you see it teeming with people, you know, getting their groceries and eating out and running their errands here at small mom-and-pop shops, at the large box shops like Kevin Esker said. And I think that's really important, and I think that's something positive for us to focus on and to continue building off of that.
Thank you, Libby. Jane?
We have the advantage here of three interstate exits. Of course, Keller Drive is the busiest. And I don't know how many times I've heard people say, oh my gosh, another restaurant or another hotel. But they seem to thrive here. And I think the city's very business-friendly. I mean, we're not going to turn anyone away, as long as they meet the building code and everything to put that building up, or to buy a new building. I think the city's very cooperative that way.
Thank you, Jane. Larry?
Before I answer the question, I'd like to say how glad I am that we got a couple women interested in running for the city council. A woman's perspective is really important, and anybody that's ever been involved in any activity knows that there wouldn't be Little League, or JFL, or all those other things without women's participation. So hats off to these two ladies. Effingham has always been the economic jewel of southeastern Illinois. It has grown like crazy. A lot of it is because of our corridor with the interstate, with a million cars a month coming through. We've done a lot to develop that. The new six-lane, easy in, easy out, is going to continue to thrive, will encourage businesses to come here, because it's a great place to shop. It's become a destination. The Performance Center brings people to town. All our restaurants bring people to town. It's a destination for people, and I think the businesses realize that. And places like Hobby Lobby may not look at a smaller market, but because of our volume of traffic and how successful our other business has been, we get them as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Merv?
I don't think people realize how much time we spend on this topic. At least one day every week, we spend at least four hours. The senior staff gets together, and this is what we talk about. Economic development, bringing in businesses. When we go to, out of town, we go to conferences, and we talk to people. We pull them over and talk to them, and we'll talk to them every time we see them. And it doesn't happen, we're not a great city to have businesses just because we're here. We work at it. Thank you.
Thank you, Merv. And that concludes question number seven. And I'm going to call a little bit of an audible here, and combine a couple of questions. But I can repeat at any time if any of the candidates would like to have the question repeated. But the question is, in your view, what has the city done well over the last four years? And what has the city done poorly that you would change? And add on to that, how would you change it? So what have we done well? What could we improve on? And if you have specifics, what would you do to improve it? And this question starts with Don.
Well, what we've done well is, I spoke about Backseat Company and Kerners, and keeping them in town, or bringing Bex in and keeping Kerners in town, because they're very close to going out of Effingham. And I think we work with the business people, like Merv said a while ago, about the inner structure. We got about 70%, I think, of the inner structure repaired underground, what nobody ever sees. That's very, very important to the cities. What was the other second half of the question?
What's done well? What could we do better? And what are you going to do to change it?
Well, we can always do better. We can, you know, work with the people out in the community more, and understand what they're wanting more all the time. I try to work, well, I worked with a business owner downtown and tried to explain about the parking downtown today. She was very concerned about taking parking places away. And I said, well, it's not, I really don't want to take parking places away. I think there's portable seating, what can be put in and in place, and use it for three months out of the year instead of 12 months out of the year, have it blocked off. And I said that in the city council meeting a couple meetings ago, too.
Thank you, Don. And we'll come down here to Kevin. The question is, what has the city done well? What can we improve on? And how do you plan on improving it?
Obviously, I think that we've done really good in the last four years. If you look around what the city looked like four years ago to what it looks like today, we have retained business. We brought, you know, retail business in, restaurants in, office buildings in. Unfortunately, you know, we didn't land that, you know, that juggernaut of factory, you know, something of that nature. And I think that's more to do with Illinois than it does with Effingham. You know, one of the things that we probably lacking in, and this was brought up with the mayors and even on the councils, maybe some intergovernmental working together, and specifically the county. I know that there's been a little bit of bad blood. Hopefully, we can get that fixed and move forward and continue to grow Effingham the way we want to. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. And Hank?
Well, like what I've seen downtown, we have a very vibrant downtown. It's obviously created a parking problem, but I would consider that a good problem, but a problem nonetheless. I like the construction trades program that has been encouraged. I think that's a great thing for the community. In terms of things that could be done better, I've talked before about, I don't think we're doing a great job of collaborating with our partners in government, whether that be Unit 40, or the Park District, or Lakeland County. I just think we can do a better job. It's not that hard. You just need to talk to one another and get things done. A specific thing I'd like to see addressed, and someone mentioned, I don't know who it was, but I hope we don't have to wait for a horrific accident on Fayette Avenue before we widen that to make it safe. And we might have to do some out-of-the-box thinking to get that done, because the state obviously isn't making that a priority. But I'd really like to figure out a way to get that Fayette Avenue project on the front burner.
Thank you, Hank. And Libby?
Hank took my answer, but yes, I think, I think clearly we've done such a great job getting business downtown, that parking is a major inconvenience, and it's what everybody's been asking me about since I announced I was running. And infrastructure is, that's a double-edged sword, because, like, I agree with what Don said. I see so much everywhere. I run and walk almost every day, and there's curbing and new sidewalk all over, every part of town I go to. But I know that there's still a lot that needs to be done. So those are two major things that I see on a daily basis.
Thank you, Libby. And we'll move to Jane, and we're answering the question, what has the city done well over the last four years? What can we do better? And how do you plan on making it better? Jane?
Well, having worked over the last 20 years with the city budget, with the city engineer's office and the city administration, we can start out with, you know, 10 projects. But by the time the budget's completed, there may be only six that we can do. So I think the city does well prioritizing projects, and I think we need to continue that. I think what a lot of people don't understand is that it takes sometimes multiple funding sources to build one project. Fayette Avenue is going to be huge. And I agree, we all need that. But it's going to take a lot of work with the state, and it's just going to cost a lot of money. We're going to have to have more joint agreements to take care of all of that. We do need to make the most of our tax dollars, and I think we're doing that well. And anyone who works for the city probably recognizes that. And it's hard to have the public criticize you for that. But it is hard. There's only so much money, and you've got so many projects. You've got to do the best you can with what you've got.
Thank you, Jane. Larry?
Wow, I think the last four years have been off the chart, things that's happened here in our town. It's incredible, the things that, I made a little list here. Downtown, it's great that we have parking problems, instead of boarded-up businesses and vacant lots and things like that. So a parking problem is a result of our vibrant downtown, two new restaurants, the library, if you think of that, we just opened that just a few short years ago. And those two librarians, they're lightning in a bottle. It's a library that everybody should be proud of. One of Hank's pet projects, and mine as well, was the Sports Center. It's alive, well, thriving. We don't really brag on our successes, but you go out there any time of the day, there's people enjoying that. There's lots and lots of kids, lots of seniors, lots of swimmers, lots of everything. So it's been very successful, and it's something that the city kind of led the way in that initial effort to do that. The Performance Center is rolling, is kind of gaining momentum each year. We've had lots of good shows this year, and it brings a lot of people to town. It does exactly what it's supposed to. It brings people here, and they spend their money. And the Trek Trail is doing great.
Thank you, Larry. And Merv, we're answering the question, what's the city done well? What can we do better? And how do you plan on making it better?
Well, I want to go back, back about eight or nine years. I think one of the first things we did well is we hired a good city administrator, and we've got even a better one now. So anyway, that really helps us. We have a professional to manage, help us manage, rather than the ones of us that are elected. And I think one thing we really do need to do is get out our information better. It's becoming really evident tonight. For example, the parking issue. We have at least 727 parking spaces downtown. It's really not so much a parking issue as it is a walking issue. No one wants to walk two blocks from where they park to where they want to shop. And I'm not condemning them for that, but I'm just saying that's the way it is. So, and we've talked about housing. You know, we're working on it. There's things like that, that we just can't get the information out enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Merv. Kevin?
All right, I'm going to, I'm going to find something we've done well that hasn't been brought up yet. I think the police and the fire department has, came a long way lately with the new fire, or the new police station. Before, there was evidence that was, could have been contaminated, you could have lost suit, you know, you could have lost a lot of possible convictions because of the way the shape that evidence was kept. And I think we're doing a lot better. And I think the fire department's getting along a lot better. I think that they're all working together better. What I would like to see improve on, I'm just going to keep beating that dead horse, I guess, about the housing, is probably one of the biggest concerns that I would have.
Thank you, Kevin. And that concludes our question-and-answer session from our candidates. At this time, we'll move to our closing statement section. And by order of draw, just to keep the crowd and those online, and those listening live informed, I'll try to give you a couple of people ahead, and also give our council candidates a chance to prepare their statement, with eight candidates up here. It gets a little busy at times. So leading off our closing statements will be Larry Meisenheimer. And second will be Merv Gillonwater. And third will be Kevin Willis. So there will be a format of two minutes per candidate. And Larry, the floor is yours.
Whenever I took a speech class, I always wanted to go first, so there's nothing to compare me with. Effingham has been my home for 40 years. This town has given my family so much, and I want to make it sure it continues to provide for our younger generation. They need jobs and the kind of amenities that will keep them engaged in our community. I have spent my entire adult life serving the good people of Effingham. I'm very pleased with accomplishments made during my term in office on the Effingham City Council. Those include the Trek Trail, the Workman Sports Center, the Effingham Public Library, the Effingham Performance Center, and the hiring of our first city administrator. It's quite a list of accomplishments in my first term as commissioner. I am a hard worker. I'm not one to sit around and wait for things to happen. I think my track record shows that. I am passionate about seeing Effingham continue to move forward and work tirelessly with the other city commissioners, county government, and business leaders of this great city. I have many friends who are business leaders, but I also have many friends who are down on their luck and looking for work. I want to see Effingham meet the needs of both those groups. I have the education, ability, and experiences needed for the job of city commissioner. My previous time spent as commissioner has given me the invaluable insight to the workings of the city government here and the needs of our citizens. I am not only a good listener, but a compassionate person who truly wants to make Effingham a great community. I have the experience, energy, and passion for this city and the people to serve as your next commissioner. I greatly appreciate your support. Thanks for attending tonight, and please get out to vote, April 2nd.
That was city council candidate Larry Meisenheimer giving his two-minute closing statement. And we'll move to Merv Gillonwater.
I think most of you here know me. Those that know me well know that I use a three-word motto, integrity, service, and pride, which I got from the Illinois State Police. The meanings of those words have come to represent not only how I work, but also the philosophy I use to guide me in my private life. If reelected, I intend to continue to use them to guide me while continuing to serve the citizens of Effingham. Integrity, not only doing the right thing, but doing it for the right reasons. Service, working to represent the people to the best of my ability in the fairest and most impartial manner possible. Pride, performing my duties in a manner that will bring honor to God, my family, the city of Effingham, and the citizens I represent. I believe that continuing to improve the quality of life for the citizens of Effingham must be one of the primary goals of the Effingham City Council. This includes working to ensure the availability of quality of health care, schools, recreational programs and facilities, eating establishments, housing, and well-paying, quality jobs. Both short- and long-term range goals must be developed by the city council to plan and promote the industrial expansion and population growth. At the same time, the council must continue to be fiscally responsible. We must continue to look toward and invest in our future, but we must ensure we do so prudently and wisely. As city council members, we must ensure that our city-owned buildings, streets, water and sewer lines, and all other infrastructure is properly maintained. Building is good, but we must continue to take care of what we have. I am proud of Effingham, and I want to see it continue to prosper. I hope you will vote for me on April 2nd and allow me to serve you as commissioner for one more term. And I'd also like to thank all of you for coming tonight. Thank you.
That was city council candidate Merv Gillonwater giving his closing statement. We'll move to Kevin Willis next, and then followed by Libby Mueller, and Hank Stephens after Libby. Kevin?
Thank you. I didn't have time to prepare like Merv did, because that's pretty impressive. I just want to say that I'm proud of the last four years that I've had on the council. I think that we have done wonderful things, and I hope that the next four years, we can do the same. I am proud that I was able to be a police officer in Effingham for 21 years, to retire from Effingham, you know, as a police officer, and to serve this last four years. And I'm asking for you to vote for me come April 2nd to serve another four. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. That was city council candidate Kevin Willis giving his two-minute closing. And we'll move to Libby Mueller.
Okay, can I tease you all a bit real quick? I know I'm really green, and I'm not gray. I'm teasing. Well, I'm not teasing, I mean, it's kind of the truth.
Only your hairdresser.
Oh, that's good, that's good. I've always been active in the community, and I'm sandwiched between two of the largest generations that reside in this community. You know, my daughter's, my youngest child's 13, my mom's 70. I'm around people 24/7, constantly talking and listening to what they want, what they want in the community, and what they want to see today, what they want to see five years from now, and what they want to see 20 years from now. So I really want to serve Effingham in this capacity and grow. So, I really want to serve Effingham in this capacity and grow in the ways I've served, and I want to broaden the representation that's on the council. And thanks for taking that ribbing. Gosh, that's either going to get me votes or really lose it for me. But I appreciate everybody who has served in the past and who's serving now, and I appreciate all of your hard work and the opportunity to be here tonight.
That was city council candidate Libby Mueller giving her closing statement. Hank Stephens will be next, followed by Kevin Esker and Jane Miller following Kevin. Hank?
I think we all have to agree that this is a truly unique community, and we're probably the envy of most downstate Illinois communities. We should all be very proud of it, and I suspect everybody at this table has had something to do with that in some fashion over the years. And Larry did a great job of naming some of the things that we have that just, they just don't happen in towns our size, but we have them. Having said that, Libby said something about twenty years from now, I want to focus on that. When I first got elected to the city council forty years ago, as we've talked about, our major employers were World Color Press, Federals Corporation, and Yellow Freight. And if those names don't ring a bell to younger peoples, they're all gone. And I think we have to realize how constant change is. Today, we have great employers providing good jobs, but as I look to the future, I look at some of these employers, I think, are they going to be around in ten or fifteen or twenty years? We have a number of employers who are in industries that may just disappear completely. So, I'm concerned that we're not doing enough to figure out what we're going to look like in ten, fifteen, twenty, thirty years. It's not easy. We're in the state of Illinois. That is a strike against us, but that doesn't mean we don't try to do it. I am a little bit disturbed that there's a group in the community of business leaders and others who have offered their help to the city in the terms of time, talent, and financial resources, and I feel the city has, in some ways, snubbed their nose at this group. The communities that are being successful in developing economically are those that partner between the public sector and the private sector, and I think we need to do that, and I think we don't do that at our peril. So, if I'm involved, I'm going to do what I can to make sure we take steps to ensure the future for the next generation.
That was city council candidate Hank Stephens giving his closing statement. And next will be Kevin Esker, followed by Jane Miller, and finished off with a statement by Don Althoff. Kevin?
Fifty years ago, my parents moved back from St. Louis, and I tried, I lived in Effingham ever since. When I got out of college, I went to St. Louis. I came back, I went back to St. Louis, came back. So, and the last time I came back was to raise my family, which is the exact same reason why my dad did. He lived in St. Louis, made a good living, but once he started having kids, almost in the grade, or grade school, kindergarten age, we moved to Effingham because a lot is the place to live. I want to keep it like that, and I want future generations to kind of feel that way. I feel lucky that my daughter's in college, and she wants to come back to Effingham. So, I hope that tradition keeps coming on. I do feel like I'm a good fit for this position, because I bring a different perspective of someone that works in the private sector and has not worked in the public sector all their life. When it comes to budget, it gives you a totally different idea of how it should be done. A budget isn't something that you should spend every year. It's something that you should try to come under budget and then try to build on that and lower your budget the next year. That's how the private industry works, and that's how companies survive today. It's the only way that you can do it. I think we do need to continue attracting businesses and residents to Effingham, and I think that the city does a pretty good job of that. That's about all I got, and just go out and vote, because if you have an opinion on what decisions are made and you didn't vote, you should have.
That was city council candidate Kevin Esker giving his closing statement, and at this time, we'll move to Jane Miller.
I've lived in and around Effingham my entire life. Oh, I'm sorry, I need this, don't I? In case you didn't hear that, I've lived around here my whole life. My husband and I raised our family here. I've seen Effingham grow from a small town with no interstate, and I know that's telling my age, but to the crossroads of opportunity. I've seen traffic congested by railroads, and now we have an underpass and two overpasses, and of course, that's with joint agreements with the state. I've seen factories and businesses thrive and then close, and then I've also seen the city staff, the city officials, work with businesses that may or may not stay here, and they've worked hard for them to get them to stay. I've also, I've also seen them promote further economic development. They're working on that continually. I remember when Lake Sarah was constructed. Now, I was very, very young then, but I had no care, I didn't care, or I didn't know that Lake Sarah was built for a secondary water source. And all I cared about was we could camp, we could fish, we could swim and ski. That was just awesome. But now I know the importance of that backup water supply. We need that. We need good potable water here, and I understand the importance and the expense of keeping that potable water. I've spent more than half my life learning about local government. I'm not, I don't claim to know it all, it's very complicated, but I know that in order to thrive, the council must work with the department heads and with the public in order to make good fiscal decisions. I understand that tax, the word tax turns people away. I understand that some people have problems with the city decisions sometime, and they have a bad opinion. But in my thirty-five years, I've seen, I've seen good decisions and not-so-good decisions made by the council. I'm committed to the future of Effingham. I have the knowledge, experience, and understanding and compassion to make good decisions for the city, and I hope you'll grant me the opportunity to serve as one of your commissioners. So, get out and vote.
That was city council candidate Jane Miller. And at this time, we'll move to our final closing statement from Don Althoff. Don?
I want to thank everybody for showing up tonight and the people watching on TV and stuff, and thanks for letting the candidates put their signs in their yard, because it's a hard thing to do. Also, six years ago, I was one of the creators of the construction trade classes, and we got all six high schools participating. We got all the superintendents together and did that, and it's been very rewarding. There's nothing impressive is humbling when a student comes up two years from, and he's got a job, and he thanks you for helping get that job, helping get that education. We teach fourteen different trades in that school, in that class, and at a class setting and go out, and we have the local contractors do the teaching and stuff within that class. And it's just been very, very rewarding, and I think that's something that other communities should really look at. It's, you know, I just, I'm real passionate about Effingham, and I've been, lived here all my life, and I love to see it grow, and I try to work on it on a daily basis. I'm always wanting to help anybody I can. Somebody asks me about it, I'll try to get their answer for them the next day or the same day. And I appreciate everybody who come out to want to run for city council. I think it's a great turnout that we got that many people interested in running for city council, but I hope I win. But, you know, but, and I think, I think I've done a good job, and I've been friends with all you people, and I hope the friendship continues, and so, and everybody have a good night and get out April 2nd to vote, and that's your privilege and your honor to get out and represent the community. Thank you.
That was Don Althoff giving his two-minute closing statement. And that concludes our city council candidate forum, and as I mentioned earlier, our mayor candidates and, or whoever's elected mayor, whoever is elected to the council, twenty-four meetings a year to prepare for. So, please join me in showing our appreciation for their willingness to serve. Final thank you to our sponsors, the Effingham County Chamber of Commerce, and thank you to the Elks for having us out this evening and providing a wonderful facility. And thank you to our media partners who are making the evening available tonight and in the future. We have premier broadcasting, effinghamradio.com, as well as effinghamcountychamber.com, so you can pick this up. If you didn't get it tonight, pick it up in the future. It will be available. You don't have to look very hard, it sounds like. So, thank you all for coming out tonight. Thank you for joining us on the radio. Have a good evening.